Evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular meeting of the La Jolla City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is April 7th, 2025. The time is now 6:00 PM. If we can all stand for our invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in service of our community, grant us wisdom in our decisions, humility in our discussion, and unity in our purpose. Bless this meeting, our city, and all those we serve. Amen. If we'll stay standing for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Schofield, roll call, please.
Ramirez?
Present.
Velasquez?
Present.
Stokler? Ayala?
Here.
Ochilla?
Pintuella?
Here.
Rico? I'm here.
All right. I do just want to mention that this title on the top of your packet says amended. That amendment for this meeting is under a new business liquor license, number one, the wine tasting by Otero Museum. So that is the only difference in your packet from Friday to the one tonight. Moving on, we will start with the public hearing. If Mrs. Sidney Leyba could come up to the microphone in case anyone has questions for her. Mrs. Harris, do you want to take over from here?
I'd be glad to. I was on before. Holy cow. Well, now here I am. Ms. Leyba, nice to see you this evening. Thank you for joining us. Take a deep breath. This is really not as scary as it might sound. The whole idea of a public hearing sounds terrifying, but the whole set of questions that we have are normally set to demonstrate that you and our city clerk, Melanie Schofield, have already fulfilled all the requirements. So in spite of you having to stand there, I'm going to be asking most of my questions for the hearing so that the public can hear Ms. Schofield explain what you've already done. And then, of course, if there are questions for you, we will give those to you. But it doesn't have, it won't be, it won't be hard and fast and scary, I promise, okay? All right. So there are rules that we have to follow because we are, we, the city, make decisions locally about liquor licenses. And the council serves as the licensing body at the local level. So, Ms. Schofield, are you able to tell us whether the application for the LJ Liquor LLC is in proper order and have the necessary fees been paid and the checks and drawings of the site? Are they all in order?
Yes, I received the completed application with all the fees and all of the necessary documentation that the state requires, diagram of the premises, proof of property possession, and all the financial documents. You want me to continue?
Perfect. Just hold that and I've got a few more. Is the location correctly stated at 302 East First Street in La Jolla?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And now, what we might recognize is that we, the city of La Jolla has seen a liquor license by this same group before. Could you give us just a brief background of why we had to come back to another hearing of this kind?
Yeah. So the previous people that were in 302 East First moved. So they're down the road at 420 East First. Ms. Leyba now is going to do a similar liquor license application at that place. And her liquor license is just a little bit different. It is not the full alcohol. It is a beer and wine. And that's because there has to be a minimum 500 feet distance from any other current retail liquor license, which is about 550 to 560 hundred feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a state statute.
That is a state statute. That's correct. We didn't make any of these rules specifically ourselves. So is the premises at 302 East First presently zoned that would allow a liquor store of this kind?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Yes. Is the premises properly occupied by the applicant is what the statute requires us to achieve? But I think that that question would be confusing to ask you. So instead, is there any reason that LJ Liquor LLC would not be permitted to run a business? That you have been made aware of?
No, there's no reason why they could not.
Okay. Then was notice of this hearing given by posting the premises as required? And was it published in a newspaper like the La Jolla Tribune Democrat more than 10 days prior to the hearing date?
Yes, it was. It's on your piece. I was going to give you the dates.
Just for what it's worth.
It is. It was. I just, I don't have the dates with me.
So and of course, the publication, how many times do you know how many times it runs in the Tribune Democrat when you make that publication?
It runs one time.
Okay. Then, is it true that the closest outlet with a liquor license is at J&amp;S Liquor at 420 East First?
Yes, it is.
All right. And that's over 500 feet away from this one?
Yes.
Okay. And is there anything else that you wanted the public to know about this application?
Just that everything's been complete. Ms. Leyba and I have been working on this for several months. And along with everything the state requires, she has also completed the alcohol server training, which we require. And it's been a pleasure, and I would recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. With that, Joey can turn it back over to you, I think.
All right. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Leyba?
Does this country store, do they have a liquor license? They don't sell alcohol?
They sell the fermented.
Fermented malt.
Like little ones. But it's not considered like a liquor license.
Just kind of like this, yeah?
To cover that.
It's similar, but. It's not just, yeah.
The thing is, there are different licenses. If you think about walking into Love's versus walking into a liquor store, you can identify part of the difference is what they sell. But also Melanie had clarified that this is a slightly different kind of license. So Melanie, do you want to speak to that?
So this is, it's, Love's has a similar type license. However, the state law 500 feet is to a retail liquor store. Love's is not a retail liquor store. They're selling the same kind of similar items as her.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one question. How did you pick the name LJ Liquor?
I've been an LJ my whole life. I've gone to far LJ.
I couldn't let you go without asking you something. I have no more questions. All right. Anything else we need out of that, Mrs. Harris?
The group would need to vote.
Need a motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve the application for a new permitted health beverage and wine liquor license by LJ Liquor.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I have some proclamations. All right, this is the one that I was at all morning for Week of the Young Child. So this is Week of the Young Child, whereas the Colorado Association for the Education of Young Children, in conjunction with the National Association for Education of Young Children, is celebrating Week of the Young Child from April 5th through April 11th, 2025. Whereas by calling attention to the need for high-quality early childhood services that embrace diversity and full inclusion for our children and families in Colorado, these organizations work to improve the quality and equitable access of such services. Whereas early childhood professionals have expertise to work with or on behalf of young children to make a difference throughout our communities, and their essential efforts deserve gratitude and recognition. Whereas public policies that support early learning and development are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. And whereas expanding early childhood learning opportunities and improving early literacy achievements are two of the top 10 goals of the state's strategic education plan. And whereas social-emotional competence of young children and professionals is a key indicator to later school success, with professionals playing a crucial role to reducing stress and improving mental health and well-being. And whereas the future of our great state depends on the quality of life we provide to Colorado's young children today. Now therefore I, Joseph Ayala, Mayor of La Jolla, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 5th through 11th as Week of the Young Child. Do we have anyone here from Otero? Is it Otero? Otero College here?
Yes, she is.
Tell them to pick it up. One down, one to go. It is also National Crimes Victim Rights Week, April 6th through 12th. Whereas crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and varied ways, often leaving lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. Whereas the concept of kinship underscores the connections that build bridges to support, services, and shared strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. Whereas kinship is the foundation of victim advocacy, inspiring trauma-informed care that meets survivors where they are. Whereas through kinship, we build peer networks and community alliances that empower survivors, foster resilience, and offer pathways to healing. Whereas kinship reminds us the strength that comes from connection, the importance of listening to every voice, and the power we have to create lasting change when we work together. Now therefore I, Mayor Ayala of La Jolla, Colorado, plan the week of April 6th through 12th, 2025, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. This proclamation reaffirms our dedication to building connections, standing in kinship with survivors, and creating a future where healing and hope are within reach for everyone. Do have them here this evening, right?
It was. Yeah, I need to turn it off. There it is. Shouldn't have touched anything. So I'm Brooke Leonard, the Director of Arkansas Valley Resource Center. We're a nonprofit agency that serves Baytown, Crowley, and Otero County. We serve victims of crime within that area. We were established back in 1987. And so we've been doing this for quite a long time. Started out serving domestic violence and sexual assault victims. And now, as of 1996, we serve all victims of crime. So I'm going to have Christine Daly, our lead law enforcement advocate, talk a little bit more about National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Hi. National Crime Victims Rights Week is a time to recognize the struggle victims and survivors of crime endure and overcome. It's also an opportunity for communities to come together to support. This year's theme of kinship is a call to action to recognize that shared humanity should be at the center of supporting all survivors and victims of crime. Kinship is a state of being with survivors that drives vital connections to services, rights, and healing. Kinship is where victim advocacy begins.
Thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you for your support. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Brooke.
All right. Moving forward, minutes of the previous meeting. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a approval of the minutes of the March 17 meeting.
Second. A motion in two seconds. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving forward, the Emergent Enforcement Solutions. Almost got tripped. Oh, no, I missed citizen participation. Okay. Citizen participation, I'm sorry. For anyone that wants to come up and say anything, we do have citizen participation. I do see someone here. Go ahead and say your name for the camera.
My name is Jeannie Thomas, and I am with the Department of Human Services and Child Welfare, and I am their Children's Services Clerk. And this month is also, along with the children, it's Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month. And so if you see pinwheels around town, it's because I've been putting them all over to bring awareness about that. And so if you would care to wear blue this month to support that, and I also have some pins. If anybody wants a pin or a pinwheel that they could put in their place of business or their home, we'd appreciate it. I just wanted to come and, because people don't know what the pinwheel means. And so I thought I'd share with the public what they're seeing.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeannie.
Pass them all.
Pass them down.
Oh, no, it's all something different.
Oh, no.
We don't have any of them at all.
Do we have any other citizen participation? I was hoping you'd get up, Nancy. I didn't want to have to. Nancy has some exciting news for us.
Yeah. First of all, the possibility might be done in August. Last week, Southeast Colorado Creative Partnership was awarded an award by the Board of History Colorado for the plaza lot, even though it isn't finished yet, if you can imagine that. And so the Stephen H. Hart Award celebrates and recognizes exemplary projects in archaeology and historic preservation across the state. Each project contributes to the field of preservation because of their innovative approaches, in-depth research, and/or use of proper techniques that honor the historic significance and craftsmanship of Colorado's archaeological and built environment. There were six members of Southeast Colorado Creative Partnership who went, as well as all the people in Denver who are working on that project. So when we got up to walk up to get the award, it was pretty impressive. And one of the men who was standing there said, wow, it looks like you brought half the county. So here is the board.
It's a heavy award too, so.
Made of all Colorado materials. Every award is different. They make a special award for each one that's given. And this year, there were five given, so.
We're almost there, Nancy. We're almost there.
It's taken a long time, but it is going to be so worth it.
Congratulations. Good job. Anyone else for citizen participation? All right. Now we will move on to Emergent Enforcement Solutions. You should have information in front of you for this. So this is a different company from the one that we were using on Highway 50. That company is no longer even considered for anything speed-related. So just know that this is a completely separate company that's going to present to us tonight.
Thank you guys for having me. Do I need to press something here?
Nope, you're still on.
Thank you guys for having me. My name is Russell Sarfi. I'm one of the owners of the company, Emergent Enforcement Solution. I'm a retired narcotics agent from Louisiana. I spent 20-something consecutive years as the FBI violent crimes task force agent and government office administration agent. So my background is all law enforcement. And about 10 years ago, me and my business partner got in this venture to identify trends in the, throughout the United States where fatalities, recs had increased due to when COVID hit. And also the inability for municipalities to be able to hire law enforcement. There was always a high turnover rate in law enforcement where when that occurs, you start seeing things that sacrifice, and usually traffic is one of them. So that's, that's why we got involved in this. We not only got involved in it to provide a high-level public safety solution, we got involved in it to also do it different than what most other vendors were doing it at the time. Most vendors, when we got into this, were all a revenue-share model vendor. We never participated in revenue share, meaning that we get 40%, 50% of your revenue. We have a set fee module, which is how we make our money from the system. The good thing about Colorado is, is Colorado adopted a law that really eliminates the ability to come in and do revenue share, which I applaud Colorado for that. And so we've been in Colorado now for a little over two years. We have a wide adoption coming on to our system. It's been taking a while to educate municipalities and for me to travel all across the state. I'm here every week. Every week I fly in, and I'm all over the place. I'm going to be in Cortez Wednesday, Kid Carson tomorrow, La Junta, I mean, La Junta today, La Hara, yeah, Thursday. So I'm all over the place, and these names really get me. So just, just want to tell you how we're different. First of all, I'm not here to sell you anything. What I'm fixing to talk to you today about doesn't cost the municipality anything. And the first thing that people, when they hear that, they say, well, how is he making any money? Well, we make money from the processing fees that it takes to generate the citations. We have to charge an hourly rate because we can't charge a per fee per citation. We invoice for an hourly rate, but that hourly rate is a proprietary way we give you a discount that's based on a $14 citation. So in other words, if you issue 100 citations, you're going to owe us 100 times 14. Does that make sense? But we, in the contractual agreement, we charge an hourly rate. And I really don't want to complicate things, but we've got multiple attorneys in Colorado, which is the ones that helped us craft the contract so that it's an hourly rate-type contract. We provide a software service that, the software belongs to you guys as long as we're still engaged in a contractual agreement with the software. So the big difference between us and other vendors is those vendors own everything. You guys are contracting with us for the online payment portal, for our mail center, for the use of our equipment, for our training services, for the storage of the videos, for everything. You don't have to pay anything to us. We're vested into you guys because it cost us about $10,000 or $12,000 just to get you operational. So if you don't generate any citations, we don't generate any revenue for our business. So that's kind of how we're uniquely different. Now, the catch to this is, and it's really not a catch, but you need to be at 35% paid tickets for the system to be at a break-even where it's not costing the municipality anything. So if you're at 35% or above, you're doing really well. It's not costing you anything. And the entire time that I've been doing this, I've never seen anybody below 30%, just to be honest with you. Hudson, Colorado, is about at 80-something percent on paid tickets, and they've been operational since November the 19th. So they're hitting that 70% to 80% every month on citations that are generated. So they're doing really well with the system. Any questions so far?
Would we, as a municipality, have to adopt a specific ordinance for this to be able to work?
Yes, sir, you do. The state requires, from my understanding, and that's the way all municipalities are doing it, to adopt a municipal ordinance for automated speed cameras.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. If you're not familiar with the law or how photo speed works, you know, you have to, the way we're doing it with your municipality that doesn't cost you anything is that we provide a handheld light art camera gun to the police department. So what makes us uniquely different is you're not just, you're not spending money to put a pole out there. You're not spending money to buy a trailer to put out there. You don't even know if photo speed enforcement is something that you really want, right? So the best way to measure it, to determine whether or not it's a fit for your municipality, is to put your officers out there, who need to be out there anyways in the beginning, to be able to educate the public that they witnessed these citations. There was an officer out there that held a handheld that physically identified that this vehicle was going 10 or above the posted speed limit when he captured the infraction of the violation. At any given time, what we like to say is that you can transition from an officer utilizing the gun to a fixed pole or to a mobile speed trailer. But I always say there's no point in putting a cart before a horse because you don't know if this is what you really want to do in the first place. So this just gives you a no-cost way to launch it, to determine if it's a good fit for you guys.
So with one of our friends over in Springfield, Mike Palacios, he's been working with Tods, and that's how they got ahold of Mr. Russell here. What their idea is, is you know, when you have an officer with a handheld, you know, he can sit out there for an hour, and he doesn't have to go and get every single person that's going 10 over. He can track four or five while he's sitting there. Whereas if he gets one that's 10 over, and then he goes and makes that stop, then he's, you know, issuing the ticket, you know, then he goes back. There's wasted time there. So whereas you can, in an hour's time, you can have quite a few people speeding. You would hope not, but that's just not the world we live in, correct?
It's not the world we live in. So just, just to be honest, the gun is more proficient than an actual speed camera because an officer has the ability to work two directions, and he can manipulate it in a better way than a fixed position can do it. So it's a good measure. Is the technology something that you guys want to move forward with down the road? But yeah, Mike is, I can tell he spent some time with you because, you know, he knows it fromwards and backwards. And his deal is, man, there's no reason why any municipality shouldn't do this because he's never heard of it the way we had presented it to him in Springfield. So, you know, it's a good way to get started. It's not a fit for everybody. And again, I've been here twice, you know. The first time I met with the city manager, I met with the chief. That was my first time coming through La Jolla. But your speeders that are coming through here, without me even doing a speed study, which we do speed studies, I can just tell you, everybody's doing 12, 15, 20 on the posted speed and coming inside the city from both directions. It's no doubt. Every roadway in every municipality is different, you know, based on the type, when you enter into your jurisdiction. You guys is more like an open road plane playing than congested, right? So that just invites for people to speed. And if you've got a few people when they're coming in speeding, the whole crew of them typically speeds. If you've got some that are not speeding, typically people don't speed. So that was the whole purpose of, you know, once they get acclimated and educated about the speed camera system, people tend to slow down when they come into the city limits. It really works. Like, we reduce speeding anywhere between 50 to 70%. It's really incredible. You have to understand that the reason you can decrease speeding by that volume is because of the mass numbers of people that you mail citations to that get them in the mail, right? That's the only way that you can change the behavior of people is to inform them that you are violating the law and you need to slow down next time. So we're a, really just a software company that has integrated with various type cameras to give you options of what you can transition to after the handheld. And it's just up to you guys. We work with you guys, and we're here. We always tell everybody, we don't want you to go out there in the first 90 days and generate as many tickets as you can. We try to control that from a vendor's perspective because the municipality and the police department has to learn the back office and the due processes and everything that is required by state law to be compliant. So when you go out and you just, like most vendors want you to do, is just do 5,000 tickets in the first month, it becomes problematic for everybody, right? Because you're dealing with complaints, you're dealing with system errors, you're dealing with people not, they don't really understand what they're supposed to be doing in the system. So that 60 to 90 days gets everybody, you know, up to speed on everything.
Any other questions for Mr. Sarfi?
So it's my understanding an officer can determine the speed of four vehicles at a time? Or how would it do with multiple targets?
Individually. So with, so with the handheld, the officer has to physically, it's Ind- individually. So with, so with the handheld, the, the officer has to physically, it's a LiDAR, which is not radar. It's a laser beam, right?
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, so he actually sees through a reticle where the LiDAR beam is hitting the vehicle and it measures the speed at that time and it gives him a reading back. And by state law, it has to be ten over the posted speed limit. So you're not issuing tickets for one, two, three, four, five. It's ten over the posted speed limit. So the LiDAR gun will not capture any videos unless they're ten over the speed limit and he would see that. It literally like in one second, he gets a register that this car is speeding. He can move it over, pull the trigger on the next one, and then he can capture whether or not that vehicle is speeding.
Prior to a contact, uh, the gun would have to be, I guess, calibrated or at least function checked prior to, to the shift. After every speeding ticket issued after that, that same function check has to be performed. So you can't. And I was a state trooper for twenty-five years and I wrote a lot of takes off LiDAR. Now, my, one of my favorite places to sit was in Swink and when people would come through. So I would clock a vehicle, run them down, issue the citation, but then I would have to check with predetermined distances, I used the LiDAR, after that contact and prior to the next one. So, if an officer can sit there and, and, and bang out four vehicles without properly function test after each one, does the system have a self-diagnostic that, that would allow not to clock if it's over a certain, over a certain threshold?
Yes, sir. It, it, it has a self-testing diagnostic within the system. But all what you're describing is what the department would do internally as a standard operating procedure. We recommend that before and after shift. In other words, if you're out there for two hours, you're checking it prior, you can check it during, during your shift as well, right? During your two-hour period, but you need a policy in place that after the shift, it's being checked as well. Where you're doing a distance check, but it's doing a self-initiating test within the LiDAR system itself.
And to comply with Colorado weights and measures, and I know we're dealing with light, what would be the recalibration standard? How often would we have to send a handheld back to your department? Or who would we send it to for recalibration to make sure it's properly functioning?
Yeah, we're, and, so we cover the cost on that because it's our equipment, but we're, we're having you send them to the Colorado, uh, Department of Agriculture where they do all of the
The weights and measures.
So you do, you're doing it right here in Colorado. So, uh, we were sending them back to the manufacturer, but when we found out through Hudson that, that's who they were using, we just started adopting, using them as well. So it's up to you guys. I don't think it's a clear definition in the law. I recommend that the, uh, calibrations are done yearly, like where, where you send them to. But I think in Colorado, I think it's every two years, if, if I'm not mistaken, but I don't know that. But I would recommend that you do it at least every year. And the reason I'm saying that is, that's been the adoption throughout the entire United States. The most laws that are in place, even like in Louisiana, requires that you send it back to the manufacturer or something like the Department of Agriculture to get the annual certifications of, of the gun.
And for an officer to be certified to use it, would they have to demonstrate a proficiency in, because in Colorado, a speed capturing device rider, uh, radar or radar is only a confirmation of vis- of the officer's visual estimation of speed. So is there somebody that would ride along with that officer, uh, and, or go to a place and that officer would say, okay, that vehicle's ten over, and then confirm that? So how do we get to the point of officer proficiency instead of relying solely on the instrument? Because, like I said, in Colorado, it's been adopted by the courts that, that a radar or LiDAR, when it captures a speed, is nearly a reinforcement of the officer's visual estimation of speed. When I became radar certified and LiDAR certified, I had to be within three miles, over twenty clocks, approaching, receiving and stationary. So is there the same type of curriculum or standard that that officer would have to use?
Well, we, we come in and we provide, uh, in-house training onsite, uh, for the use of, uh, the camera system itself, right? Uh, we don't provide any LiDAR instructor training. That's something that, uh, the department needs to have on its own and develop its own policies and procedures for that. We don't really get involved with that, right? You know, when it comes to the law and what policies and procedures that you guys adopt, again, I just wanna say, that's the beauty of us, that we leave that to the police department and the municipality to come up with a system. When you, when I direct you to, to call Chief Scott Sedgwick at Hudson, he developed a program and that's, that's the beauty of our system. It allows you to develop your own internal program for how you wanna deploy the system. You're not just doing it based on, this is what the vendors say. This is the law that the vendor is telling you about, right? We're not doing any of that. This is something that your city attorney, the chief of police, and the leaders of the municipality can come together and say, this is how we want to deploy the system. We don't make any recommendations. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. And I appreciate it. And I'm a big fan of the tool. I used it for many years and then
Yes, sir.
And I, I enjoyed it. Yes, we do have a speeding problem in L.A. So I appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for the questions. And really, the only way that, uh, like, I, I, I go to council meetings and usually it's turmoil within the council meetings. You guys are really good. Just, you seem to all like each other. But, uh, it's good to ask the questions because that's really what I'm good at, is explaining to you this, because I don't want you to have a false, uh, uh, interpretation of the system because I'm going to invest ten thousand dollars into this with no binding contract. So that's the other deal. Like, we don't hold you to a one-year tw- uh, twenty-four-month contract. You can cancel services at any time with a thirty-day written notice. So I just need to, also, just like you're evaluating me, I'm evaluating the municipality because at the end of the day, I made the final decision, are you a good fit for us as well? Which I know you are, but you get where I'm going with that. So, questions is the best way, uh, to determine in the beginning, is this something that you guys would like to initiate and, and try, you know, so.
The only thing I'd like to say is, uh, like he said and Joe said, uh, Todd has already spoken within this, uh, this is direction from him and it, uh, you know, it's a, uh, I think he thinks is a, a good fit for L.A. I know the trailers people have concerns about that and, and, uh, you know, it being the law enforcement not out there enforcing the law in this case, you know, that's how it would start out and, and, and I think it's a good fit, but, uh, that, that direction is from Todd. So, just so the citizens know that, it's not something the council is putting out there. It's, it's our, our, our police department that is, that is putting this out there, so.
Todd wanted to be here tonight. He had some other prior commitments, so he couldn't make it. Uh, do you wanna talk briefly about the, the poles and the trailers that you do and, and those next steps and what those look like?
Yeah.
Pricewise?
Yeah, yeah. So, we're, uh, one of the least expensive vendors as well. Uh, one of the things that we promote is not upcharging for hardware. We solely make our money, uh, as a partnership with you guys for processing tickets. So we use vendors like Tittle, Stalker, uh, uh, Traffic Logic. We integrate with a, a variety of cameras. In the brochure that you have there, you'll see the first camera, which is the handheld LiDAR camera gun. It's free, okay? The second one, uh, that camera can be retrofitted to a pole. So we charge fifteen grand. That's the total fee if you have one-ten electric, electricity stubbed out at an existing pole. Uh, which I think you guys have some poles out here that, you know, might, we'd have to explore that. But there would be increased cost if, you know, uh, if we have to put solar on a pole, right? It's about a five thousand dollar increase. We don't upcharge for that. It's just what it costs to have that camera installed on a pole that is solar, okay? Uh, the trailer is solar. That camera that you see in the middle is retrofitted to the trailer. It's the same camera that's on the trailer. Uh, the trailer is solar powered. It's thirty-one thousand five hundred. I begin, we don't mark that up. That's what we pay for the trailer and then to retrofit the components to make it work. So it's thirty-one five and then fifteen thousand. And if you want it solar on a fixed pole, it's gonna be another five grand. And we deal with a vendor here in Colorado that provides the solar, uh, components for everything. So, that's basically the price. And again, I just wanna say, Hudson, within ninety days, little over ninety days, with limited enforcement that they done, uh, had already generated thirty grand, uh, to acquire that. And when I say limited enforcement, uh, the chief mandated no more than two hours of enforcement per officer during daylight hours, because the gun only can be used at daylight hours, okay? That's another deal. So you're limited for the time span with the, with the handheld gun solely for daylight hours. He only worked two hours, no more than two hours, and they only worked about fifteen days total to generate that amount of net revenue. So it's, you know, it's just an eye-opener and I, I think your traffic is more than what Hudson is, just to be honest with you. I, we didn't do any speed studies here, but just eyeballing it out there. It's pretty substantial traffic coming through here.
And, and the reason I brought that up is because Todd, if this does go well and, and he is able to, to generate, he wanted to get the ones that go on poles for the school zones. That, that was his plans are, uh, if this works out the way it should work out. So that, that's where he was gearing towards. So, um, he, he wanted really to get something in those, those school zones because that's where we're seeing a lot of the issues. So, yeah, we have a, a highway problem, but in the community as well, we have, uh, a lot of people in.
And so that's a good point and that's something to, to also, uh, evaluate us on. The reason we encourage the transition and then for you, and we don't upcharge and to make it affordable for you to buy those equipment, is because most companies are not going to suggest you put their equipment in a school zone that's not high-volume traffic. It's probably the same reason you guys were dealing with this trailer deal, that they didn't wanna do it. I don't, I don't really know, because you got, got a lot of high-volume traffic out there. I don't really understand that part of it. But, uh, that's what you deal with when you deal with other vendors and there's a lot of vendors in Colorado, trust me. And, uh, but a lot of them have been failing. Even though you're going to see bigger municipalities adopting them, we've already got calls from those bigger municipalities about transitioning, but they're stuck in two-year, four-year contracts that they can't get out of. So, my job is to just educate as many people as possible. I benefit from that. Uh, hopefully I can convince you guys that this is a viable system for you. You come on with us. But it's all about educating you guys and don't, just because of Ver mobility or these other, uh, companies or billion-dollar companies, we provide, uh, a really good service, uh, and we deal with you personally, uh, with the system. You know, you pick up the phone and call me and, uh, there's a problem, we're gonna deal with it. And I have a letter in there from Chief Hudson, I mean, Chief Scott Sedgwick at Hudson. You can pick up the phone and call him and he'll be able to explain to you about, about our services.
Uh, you mentioned about the paid tickets. Uh, what about the unpaid ones?
Yeah, good question. So, when I said that Colorado has a good law, well, they also have some, uh, parts in the law that's not so good, right? Uh, and I would think that that's part of the non-paid tickets. You have to come up with, uh, a collection agency that's gonna work for you for all the tickets that are non-paid. Now, I can tell you what we're doing in Hudson. We're, we're hitting at about seventy to eighty percent, somewhere in that range of paid tickets. And we're now doing for Hudson, a second mailer reminder notice. Because what we found out in Hudson is, there's a, probably a five percent of the people that when they got issued the tickets in the mail, they know they got it from Hudson, but they done lost it. So they're calling up there, asking them, can they locate their ticket and whatnot? So we feel like we can send out a second reminder notice. Now, we're charging you a dollar to send a second reminder notices out. We can't really eat that cost, the cost of that. We've processed the ticket and we've done all of that, but we're making that something at a cost for you guys. If you wanna send out a second reminder notice, it's just gonna cost you a dollar and we'll just invoice you for that service fee. Did that answer?
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Sarpe, for all your information tonight and then you'll work with Michael and Todd and, and their next steps on how they go forward.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pack my stuff up and head back to Denver.
Don't speed.
Yes, sir, Michael. Thank you.
All right, moving on. And these, these are discussions, but they're, they're more, more or less updates, Michael. So if you wanted to just, uh, go over, you did send out an email today on the first one, which is the, the vehicle use, uh, and then the motor pool. If you just wanna briefly explain how that works to, not just, obviously council, but to, to the general public, because we filled a lot of those questions. Well, how do we have, you know, forty-seven trucks and, and who's running it and who's purchasing all that? So, if you wanna just give a update.
So, so basically, what, what this, in the beginning was, uh, we, we had a vehicle policy, uh, vehicle use policy for, um, employees here for the city. Um, and it was kinda lacking a little bit, I guess is the best way to put it. So I went through and kinda revamped it a little bit. Uh, that's why I sent out today to you alls for, for your review uh, and your, and for your feedback. Um, I did get one, one, one email back, well, I guess two, ten to two emails of feedback. Um, I'm going to try to incorporate with what we, what we have working here already and resend out. And again, I'm, I'm totally wide open for, for more feedback from anybody, uh, that may have it. And I may be more than happy to discuss with anybody, any of the points, um, and the policy itself. Uh, but really, it just, um, it's, it's a document to really to protect our city, pro- uh, protect, protect the city as well as our cit- or as our employees when they are out, uh, in vehicles, um, giving them the baselines of rules of do's and don'ts when they do have a city vehicle. Uh, that's, that, that's the biggest baseline of it.
Um, when it comes to, to motor pool, do you know offhand how many vehicles we have currently?
I've got a list in there on, on my desk, um, but I don't know the exact number right offhand.
Okay. My issue was, we were given a list before that was just this huge list and we had no idea what was working, what isn't working. Like, you know, it's just a huge list of vehicles. So I didn't know, you know, at any time, how many vehicles do we have?
Right, and, and that's the next step of the process, um, i- is, you know, identifying how many vehicles we have, what ones are good, what ones are bad. You know, what, what we can, we can surplus get rid of, what ones that, you know, just are sitting somewhere, doing nothing for the city. Uh, again, it's just part, I, that's gonna be the next step of my process of, of, of doing this.
Yeah, when, when I got your email, I kinda took that and I hope everyone else did too, is, is Michael's working on this and he's open to any, any feedback, any changes now at the time. Uh, I sent an email out initially where council was, you know, asking about this because we had done it for probably over, a little over a year, trying to figure out where, where we're at on that. So you have taken a lot of leadership so far and just getting us to where we're at today. So, if you guys have questions for Michael now, is the, the time to?
I have a clarifying question, so.
I don't know if your mic's on, Marie. There you go.
All right, um, so, there, there was a question about ta- uh, transporting non-employees and the policy certainly addressed it, but the question was specifically, what does our insurance policy say about non, uh, employees riding in the car? And the policy says, as long as the manager signs off on it, it's okay. But I think the question is about what's insurance gonna do?
No, so, this right here is, is not the policy that you have in front of you right now. This is a draft that, that I'm working on.
Okay.
So this is a working draft. This is not what's in place right now. Um, from what I understand right now, what Service has told us, uh, Dawn and I, is, is that anybody that's in the vehicle, whether they're a city employee, whether they're a family member, whether they're somebody picked up on the side of the road, um, if, if an accident occurs, that they would, everybody in the vehicle would be covered under the policy. Now, on the back end of that, um, if we have folks that are, um, not in there for city business and, you know, the city does have to pay out for stuff like that, the, on the back end of that, premiums are gonna go up. So that's, that's the part where we're trying to figure out, um, you know, what's an authorized person, what's an unauthorized person. Um, additionally, the optic that I was initially given is there are city employees that, you know, pick up kids from school, take kids to school, uh, transport them here, transport them there. Um, a- and again, the, the, the way it was framed to me was, hey, why are taxpayers paying for city employees to haul their kids around? And I kind of agree with them, because again, that's not what we're supposed to be doing with, with city vehicles. So again, that's why, um, this public, well, this draft i- i- is here today for you all. Um, and again, it's, it's a working draft. I'm gonna continue to work on as time goes on. Does that answer your question?
It did.
Okay.
So, yes, covered, but I certainly understand the, the issue. But it, it does seem like there is a, a black and white nature of, um, the question of insurance coverage. So I'm glad that, um, it would be covered.
Yes.
Um, yeah, but it's, it's, the, the perception is the problem, so.
Well, I mean, the, the perception on, on also, also, uh, again, if, you know, the city were to pay out for an insurance claim, um, on some of the, you know, that's not authorized to be in there, that aren't Um on some of the, you know, is not authorized to be in there, a non-city employee, a non, not someone not conducting city business. Again, our our premium is going to go up.
Yeah, and and then the other issue was, you know, most of them are white trucks, but then you have your your different vehicles that are not white trucks, but they're not marked. And so, you know, it it's hard to tell if it's a city vehicle and and what they're doing with it. So that was another issue that's constantly getting brought us. Brought up to us uh by constituents.
Yes, and that's something else I'll I'll be addressing soon as well.
The emblem, you're gonna, are you looking at that as well, having all city vehicles marked?
Uh what, with the exception of um three vehicles, yes.
And we talked about.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
There's a three. Unmarked um police.
Vehicles.
Vehicles.
Yes.
Three unmarked police vehicles. Everybody else has a, should have an emblem?
That's what we're going for, yes.
Okay. Cool.
So that's what we we will be going for, yes.
Good.
Anything else on that? Moving on, um economic development, we did have a work session. Uh for those of you that are watching now that didn't get to watch the work session, and then Michael was working on something else after that, so I'll let you just go.
Uh I'm that's still an ongoing thing with that. Um I'm I'm going back and looking at the original articles articles of incorporation. Um I want to see how they apply it to today because they, I mean, originally they were from nineteen eighty eight, if I remember correctly.
It's a little bit old.
A little bit. I mean, you know, I, a little bit. Um but uh I what I really want to want to try to dial into to see if, you know, the stuff that was in those original articles are applicable today. Um and if not, you know, do do we amend those articles? Do we scrap them completely and start over? Um and and just really trying to figure out what it is that, you know, this council wants to see in regard to economic development. Because again, my 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 vision of economic development is different from all you alls. Um and so I want to make sure we're all moving together in the same direction with economic development stuff, uh rather than everybody trying to work their individual routes. Uh because again, it's it's going to take longer for all of us to get there for all going in different directions.
And you had some stuff in Oklahoma that you were looking to.
Yes, I got some stuff, uh well, it's my my contact in in Oklahoma was uh at a conference last week. So um I'm hoping to catch up with with them this week and um I'll ask them a few different questions and get get a few different things out there.
I just want everyone to know that Michael's working hard on that.
I'm on it. I promise I'm on it.
So we will, uh when we get more information from Michael, we may plan another work session on that and just see where what we found out and. And how we move forward on that. I felt like that hour, while it was productive, we didn't get get half as far as we wanted to on that, so. Um so once Michael has a better update on us, then we can plan something else for that. Uh moving on to unfinished business, property management, fund audit. Mrs. Harris had some news on this from Sersa, correct?
I did.
And I sent you guys all an email out too, just so you were a little bit prepared for tonight.
So what we discussed um on the resolution, because of course what comes out, what was discussed in executive session is not public. But what comes out of it obviously is public, and that's the resolution that we um was was finally agreed upon. So with the resolution, we talked about a budget of nothing more than eight thousand dollars used to fund some kind of audit. One of the reasons for that was because we knew that would be enough money to cover the deductible that Sersa would charge us if they were going to do such an audit. But in my conversations with them, they explained that they don't do things like audit. They only investigate an accusation of something, and of course, that's not what the resolution discussed. The resolution was saying, do we have enough information so that the council is informed about this enterprise fund? It was not an accusation that something was going wrong. So the way that that conversation closed was, this is not something that Sersa can do, find an independent auditor. And of course, that that sounds wonderful, but it would require quite a lot of extra money that we would be spending to do something that. It's possible could be done locally, in-house, um recognizing that there are people here within the city who know a great deal about what's happening with property management. But the information that I provided to Michael and to Joe was that if we can't do a Sersa quote audit. Then how do we want to proceed, recognizing that the resolution had a limited budget and a request that used that word? So uh we would like, um I think at least some discussion concerning the next direction to take and whether that's something that um. We we might have Mr. Hart filling us in on what the other options might be if we can't use Sersa. Because I believe that part of the rest of the resolution indicated that Mr. Hart would be responsible for that. So the report that I'm giving is really just, Sersa said no. Take it away, Michael, because that's kind of where it goes from there.
So so really what it boils down to, uh is, you know, since Sersa is out on it, is, you know, do do we still seek a third party to come in and do this? And then if so, what's what's the cost going to be on that, um given given the scope that, you know, the that we're we're trying to look at here or?
Just quickly, let's make sure we clarify for everybody. Sersa is our insurance company. Everybody here knows that. But everybody who's listening may not understand why we're talking about that. Sersa is insurance. We talked about it before because they cover our driver and our vehicle fleet. And they also cover other things that would be related to just understanding what happens within the city. Sorry to interrupt, but I think that's useful.
Appreciate the clarification clarification. Um so, you know, one option is is again seeking that third party outside somewhere else. Um but then again, again, at what cost? Is it going to run more than the eight thousand dollars previously or that's already in the resolution? Um the other option i- is internally, um is having someone internally do, you know, the same thing. We give them the scope of what we're looking for. Uh or what do you what what do you look for and then turn it loose and go from there. And so really, I just wanted to bring it to you all to for discussion. Um I did get some feedback uh via email from from some of y'all. Um in in regard to how you how you'd like to proceed, but again, I just wanted to be open and and out there for for everyone to hear and uh have a discussion on it.
My issue is not the money so much as it is the timing. And if we have to look for another third party, the amount of time that will be lost on on that side of it. Which is why at the moment I'm in favor of just having someone internally be here to answer these questions that we were really wanting answers to in this audit. Um that that's how I feel and I've I've read most of the emails that that came back. Um so I it's not that I'm against. The third party still being a selection. I I'm just against the timing of it and how long that would take. Uh I I'd rather it move a little bit faster. That's that's my two cents on it.
A- again, I mean, you all.
I'm I'm one of.
Y'all put me in the in the direction, wind me up, and I'll and I'll go. Um I just, I want a little bit of a little bit of feedback from you all on how to proceed.
My feeling is it might be a little bit more of an iterative process where um I know that we've asked for certain kind of chunks of information. And I have a feeling that what um would be helpful, rather than having one investigation or one firm. Is I I kind of feel like we need to see um some of these lists produced and have a look and say. Does this answer questions or create more questions? So I I'm I'm with Joe. I think we need to move forward and it needs to be um timely. It was initiated by some very specific um concerns uh about raises giving right at the turn of the year. So um yeah, I think I think time on this is important, but I I think it can be a cooperative process where you bring us some information. And then we see if it answers questions or begs more.
I was in favor of a third party doing it. Well, like, I responded to the email with it. Just the business is conducted the same way, my worries if we get the same outcome. That's why we're doing, that's why we passed the resolution.
Uh again, I'll reiterate, I'm I'm good either way. You all want to do this, I really am. It's just, like I said, if we do the third party, um there is going to be more time involved. There potentially going to be more of a cost involved, but um as Mayor alluded to, if 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 cost is not really an issue. Um then I will go in and continue on with what the resolution does and see and seek a third party.
I'd like to hear what Damon and Lisa have to say first.
Sure.
I'm I I'm fully confident that we have people within the city that can can handle this. Uh I'm I'm on board with it occurring in a timely fashion so we can move on with other business, but thorough, yes, but timely fashion so we can move on.
Um, Mike. Well, my recommendation was the auditors that do our financial audit, but if that's, we're also still like in tax season. So I don't know if that's uh not going to work with timing, so I'm okay too with getting a list and moving forward. And going through it like Maureen said.
And I heard kind of that same regard from Councilwoman Ochoa too. Um A- Andrew Hancock and Phrase, there you go. I was going to use their first name. So Hancock and Phrase, uh who does our other audit. Um what we're kind of asking in this resolution is a little bit different from what they do. Um so to to ask them certain things, maybe they could they could handle some, but some of what we're asking is a little bit different. If you read the resolution on on what we're asking for. Uh so maybe it is something like maybe Maureen was talking about, you know. We get some information, maybe something like this can go to them, but this needs to be handled somewhere else.
I'm fine with that.
Whereas they can't give the whole scope of the audit. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Aaron, would this need to be an amendment to the resolution then?
It's either an amendment to the resolution or it's an another resolution that just describes step one of of this. Because what you've done so far is you've made a resolution of the things that you want, but um what Ms. Rikoff has recommended is that we take it in chunks. So one option would be a resolution for the first matter and then maybe something more specific about what we need from that. That that would be one thing. An amendment to the resolution would be saying that we're going to change the things we've all, that the resolution already asked. Um you, Mr. Hart, to do, because if I, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but if I'm remembering, at the end, it was that this was a responsibility that. Um the council was asking you to undertake. So if we were to amend it, it would be that the council is now asking you to undertake something different. Um whereas if the council instead chose to say, well, we actually want, we know that you're doing an overall audit. But we like more specific information going this particular direction on one issue, you could do that as well. I think it might be helpful to get on into the discussion a couple of the things that we might be pursuing. Um if Ms. Rikoff, if you wanted to share a couple of the things that you were thinking about or anyone else who had something like that, just because otherwise. We're still speaking in um generalities and I don't know how to make further recommendation.
I think one thing that wasn't in the the resolution, but that I did bring up, is the tour. The 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 tour of of properties. So if if we can get some information, as Mrs. Rikoff mentioned with the, you know, lists of properties and that. And then being able to tour that, that was not in the resolution. So that would that would be that would be a new.
Be a new one, yes, or an amendment if you want to just say that these are, if you're further refining what you're asking. Um I do want to ask about.
I was I was just trying to think of anything that was asked for that wasn't in the original.
And when we talk about the tour, I think we also want to further refine because there are various renditions of. The the resolution in general speaks of city-owned property. But where is that list coming from? And when we talk about a list, is that the list that we have at the city? Is that a list that the tax assessor has based on properties listed as owned by the city? Um and it might begin, since I'm highlighting that those could, I suppose, be different. The first step might be comparing those to understand what in fact you're looking at.
Trust but verify type of.
Then we would probably need a new resolution. Yeah, because in clarifying comments by the city attorney for in the meeting, the word audit is not an additional financial audit that repeats the work. Already done by the city of Lahana counties. And in fact, that's what we are changing our minds or want to to do now, is repeat the work. Or is this going to be a specific audit?
No, when we said we were not going to repeat the work, what we meant is that our um financial auditors already do that kind of financial audit. And this was going to be different as Mayor Ayala was explaining. That um when he was answering this Pantoia, saying that they would not be a good fit for an audit of this kind. Because this is a different sort of request as made by the resolution.
So I would say the raises, in my opinion, would be the number one thing, my issue. That's where I'd like to start, but it's it's up to you guys. I'm just one again.
And also lease agreements, any lease agreements that are out there?
Whether that your one or is that your two?
No, that would be.
That would be your one?
And is it fair, I heard tour, is that someone else's one?
I I think that goes with the lease agreements. The the tour.
Tour plus lease agreements.
Building inventory is how I, to me, building inventory is the umbrella and the lease agreements are part of the building inventory. And then getting on a bus and going to look at them is the fun part.
Yeah, that that would be one.
Literally getting on a bus. I I mean, it it, I I can see that happening. I'm just wondering, should I put that on the list?
Yes.
Okay, it's a bus. Here we go. Bus tour. Paul and Damon, you want to weigh in on your one?
We gotta, we we gotta make our way through all of them, I guess. The the order doesn't matter to me. Is there a priority on one? I don't know.
They are all a priority, I think.
So if I may clarify, what I think I'm hearing is that we may need a new resolution. We need that to be drafted. So that um when I try to draft it and then I'll send it to the mayor, you can decide by discussing. Getting the getting the email and then sending individual emails back to the mayor about whether or not there are changes that you need. Is that a fair assessment of the next step that you're asking for?
I think we just need to add the bus tour because everything else is still pretty much in there. And then the priority, I mean, we could do building as one and um raises as two. It it just the raises really concerned me because we had such an, I thought, an open budget process where we we talked about all this. And we were told that, you know, we're all tightening the belt and uh that didn't happen, so.
I appreciate, I like the idea of a new resolution because it would clarify and be transparent about what we're doing. But I also feel like if there's a way we can, as a council, say, we have handed this off to our city manager. And trust him to figure out the the order of things and the how. I think it, I think it's pretty clear, the what, that we want to know, and he understands that it's something that's a high priority for us as a council. Um so I I don't know if we need a whole new resolution or just to tweak the existing resolution to make it clear that. We are authorizing the city manager to conduct the audit. Um and then I just added language, including procurement of services if the manager deems necessary. In in striking that to select a reputable and independent auditing firm.
I think that's absolutely appropriate.
And then I think that kind of encompasses the spirit of what we're trying to do. And let me look to Michael.
Michael, how do you feel?
Uh again, I just need a little bit of direction from y'all. And I I can I can work with that. That's not a problem.
I think we have this list that provides some direction and we would just need to discuss whether or not the resolution would be amended to change that.
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah. Do we need the amendment first or do we?
I think we would need to have a motion regarding the amendment and then vote on the amendment. Is that right?
Shall I?
I can't do it. I can't.
I, um, yeah. I'd like to uh make an amendment to Resolution uh seven twenty twenty-five. Uh in item four, to strike the words to select a reputable and independent auditing firm. And add at the end of that sentence, including procurement of services if the manager deems necessary. Let me read what the whole sentence will now would now say if you agree to the amendment. Item four, audit firm selection. The city council hereby authorizes the city manager to conduct the audit, including. "including procurement of services if the manager deems necessary." Yeah. If the city manager deems necessary, yeah. So that's my motion.
Motion to amend, now is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote. That passes unanimously. All right, moving on, Mrs. Harris.
All right, these are liquor licenses. Just to make sure that we clarify, what we did earlier was the public hearing. That's a brand new liquor license versus these that are licenses for specific events. So number one, under new business for liquor licenses is an application for a special events permit by Otero Museum Association. That's Dave Hill. He, he is the event manager, and this is their annual benefit event that's scheduled to happen on April twenty-fifth from five thirty to seven thirty.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Hold on, quickly before you.
Do all three of them together?
Well, first what we would certainly, we would need to make sure that we hear from the city clerk that they are in fact recommended, so why don't we do all three? Let's get information from, from our clerk and then we could take the votes from there. So that was the first one. The second is an application for a special events permit. This is by Southeast Colorado Creative Partnership. Nancy, Nancy Asherman is the event manager. That's the annual Brew Fest, scheduled to be held on June second from six to eleven at Santa Fe Plaza. Sorry, June sixth, yes, there we go. All right, finally, an application for a renewal of a tavern license by Red Dog Revisited LLC, who does business as Red Dog Revisited there on East Third Street. So now, if, talking about them, in, taking them all as a whole, Ms. Schofield, are you familiar with each of these applications?
Yes, I am.
Is there anything that would stop, would be notable for the council to not approve them?
No, there isn't.
Therefore, do you have any recommendations?
I recommend approving all three of these renewals. Well, the two special events and the renewal for the Red Dog Revisited.
Now, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two applications for special events permits and the renewal of the tavern liquor license by Red Dog Revisited.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not a last for your vote? That passes unanimously. Congratulations again, Nancy. All right, moving on. First reading, an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation to the electric fund for the calendar year twenty twenty-five. We did have a special work session with the utility board and the council, so we could all get on the same page on this. Mrs. Harris, if you wanna just go through that. Even though we've done it, it feels like forever on this one.
Okay, so this is, this ordinance is drafted slightly differently. It just lists the three facts and it says, based on these facts, so this is a as you are familiar already, I think from our previous discussions, this is a change in the budget specifically for electric because of the two breakers that need to be purchased that we talked about at previous times. So the supplemental appropriation is because those were not the, what is it? I need my glasses, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred dollars was not in the previous budget, and so the request is now to approve it in the middle.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to make this supplemental appropriation to the electric fund for six hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred dollars.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Only to point out that if there isn't a lot of discussion, there's been plenty of discussion.
There's been a lot of discussion.
And nobody who's watching from home should doubt, yeah, that this has been thoroughly vetted. And lots of questions were asked and answered, and I appreciate the staff that work for the city that helped us wrap our arms around this. And just ensuring that a short discussion does not mean short attention span on this one.
Two utility board meetings, two council meetings, and a work session went into this one, so. All right, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. You didn't have to talk tonight, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, committee and board reports.
Okay. Senior Center Advisory Board met last Thursday, holding steady about four hundred and seventy-five members. In the previous meeting, I discussed that the Tai Chi classes were going to be suspended, but Mr. Polly has taken upon himself to continue those classes until Sue Vance comes back. Still no scheduled dances. Been brought up, nobody's even approached the idea of a dance with the dance committee. And yes, the senior center is available for rental. That question came up again, and they are available. And if you're interested in going to Rocky's game, get with Celeste Calton at the senior center. They need a minimum of twenty tickets to be purchased before they can apply for them, we're having a say. There we go, utility boards tomorrow, tune in. I guess you saw the fruits of utility board and city council working together and passing the resolution for the replacement of the, for the supplemental budget that we did tonight. And from the hospital board, planning on having the dual meeting with the city council and the hospital board on May twenty-seventh of this year. May twenty-seventh. Starting in sixteen. If that doesn't work for a majority of you, I can get with Andy Fleming, or Michael can get with Andy Fleming, and see if there's an update.
Yeah, I think we had to take it back from April to May, because of schedule. So I think, I think May was good for everybody, last night, too.
It's good for me.
Any other committee or board reports?
Yeah, Planning Commission met, we didn't have, we didn't have business per se. I'm still just looking for applicants. We have an open spot. So anybody who's interested in serving on a city committee, I believe the Planning Commission would be a good place to jump in, so just making a pitch for that. Melanie, when is that, when do you want to hear from people by?
That is open until Phil.
Open, okay, and so it's still open. We'd love to have, we'd love to have some new faces and voices on that.
And, and I wanna talk about tourism real quick. We had a tourism meeting, I, I was only able to join through phone. But if you guys remember, the first meeting of last month, when I brought out the CML packet that said, you know, there are some cities that are using tourism money to fix roads, to put up lights and safety signs and stuff like that. That was something that I had already taken to tourism and let them know too, there were some people that weren't there. Well, tourism kind of got a little bit on the defensive, I'd say. That is still very, very early on. We, we don't even have anything in the works of where that looks like. If that's even possible to do where we would be looking at, we'd have to prove that it was due to increased tourism if, if we wanted to fix a road. So someone in tourism said, well, you're gonna fix a, a pothole on Sixth and Raton. No, we, we would not use money to fix a pothole on Sixth and Raton. We would make sure that we had everything that would be able to be proved that, hey, we were trying to fix first in Santa Fe, because we seen an increase due to traffic counters, or, or due to, you know, we'd have to tie it in to increased tourism, be able to take that money. Something that I did notice, though, in, in my calls, noticed it as well too, is the way that it was passed versus what we have now, it doesn't match up. And Mrs. Harris may be able to speak more on that and what that looks like for future.
Do you mean the way that, what was passed, that tourism in general?
The question, the, for the lodging tax.
Ah, yes. Well, I've actually had multiple conversations with Aliza about this, just to understand what the history was, because they, it does seem that it was passed just for tourism funds, but what we've started doing is we may have particular projects in mind that are the only ones. So I think that primarily if we were trying to decide how that money should be spent, of course, it first goes through the tourism board. But it may be that the tourism board is under the belief that they are legally obligated to make certain decisions about it, and that may not in fact be true. At least based on my discussion with Aliza about how the, the history of it, the, the verbiage of it and so on, and I went back to, to review it as well, there isn't anything specific aside from saying that it, it needs to be tourism projects. But it does sound like over the years, we have developed a belief that there were particular large-scale goals that were part of that. And at least according to the research I've done, that doesn't have to be true. But I know that within some of the projects that we have in mind, especially when they are large building projects, they do require a lot of planning ahead of time, years and years, in order to be on particular lists, to be considered for certain grants. And of course, to have enough money in the coffers to provide the match was always the dialogue that was going on at the time. If we wanna do a particularly large project, we have to have all of this money available to make that match. But it may be that all of us would benefit by looking back at what those, those rules really are to decide whether we are still, whether we are in a rut that was based on prior dialogue, or whether we are really following the rules as they are. I apologize, I, I didn't prepare anything more to, to talk specifically about what those options are, but if the council's interested in that, we could get the verbiage and either I can provide it to Joe to circulate, or we could talk about it at the next meeting.
I think we can definitely circulate that information out, I think everyone should be on the same page here. But I just wanna reiterate to everybody that was either watching that meeting or didn't watch that meeting, that we are so early, that, that's, that's just something that other towns in, in Colorado are doing right now. If we can find a way to do that, hey, awesome. But when we were looking at it, we did see that those two didn't match, so.
Not looking for more meetings in my near future, but since the joint session with utilities went so well, maybe put it on our radar that a joint session with tourism and council, after we have a chance to look at some of these things and kind of have a, a broader conversation about what, what we'd all like to see with tourism in that bucket of money would be a good idea.
Absolutely, and, and we did talk about having a tourism update from Mrs. Denahy as well too, so we, we have some questions there. Urban Renewal met, and, you know, we have a full board, correct? Yes, we have a full board. We talked about a certain company that was doing some stuff to the Chestnut Apartments, I don't know, maybe, maybe someone knows something about that. Parts or waiting on windows, is that correct?
Yep. Sure, win it.
Okay. And we also talked about what the application is gonna look like. At that meeting, we didn't get to where we needed to be, but we did have a work session, and at the next meeting, we should have something that'll get voted on, that can be put out to the public, so they know what they qualify for, what that application looks like, what the process is, way before time. And, and we're really moving forward, I'm really proud of that group. Nancy is our chair, and you're doing a good job with Urban Renewal, so thank you.
I think it's really exciting what, what you guys are putting together, and I, I hope that we can find a way to talk about it a lot once that application is available, because I think there's some really exciting things that could be done with it, so.
It's been many years, and they've, they've done everything from small to potentially big businesses that, that they're gonna help with this, and, and they have a goal of getting rid of that money, and, and we wanna make sure that they can, because if they can get rid of that money in the Tiff district, that helps out the city tremendously, so we're, we're gonna help them get rid of their money, huh, Nancy? We, we, we need a lot more, but we need people to take what we have too, so. And Melanie's done a great job on Urban Renewal, so thank you. City manager comments, Mr. Hart.
All right, good evening. First, I wanna thank everyone that came out to Kishori for the big reception that we had. That was awesome, the community really turned out, I really appreciate the chamber and the city for putting that on. It was a really nice welcome to Lahuna, and I really did, I really did appreciate meeting everybody that they came out. Something I started this, this month here, well, I guess just technically last month, was I've joined up with the Action Colorado, their twenty twenty-five, their, their Leadership Policy and Governance Academy. So basically what it is, it, it's a distinguished professional fellowship, designed to cultivate regional leadership and inform public policy and reinforce principle of sound governments, governments here in Colorado's rural communities. This actually started out as Action Twenty-two, for those who've been around for a little bit. And basically, it's, it's providing a, a voice to our small rural community, communities, to the folks in Denver. Because oftentimes, you know, what, what happens in Denver doesn't, you know, really take into consideration what's going on out here in southeastern Colorado. So with, with Action Colorado, it's, you know, it's really given us a deep dive into what's going on in Denver, to be able to, to, to speak intelligently to those folks down there about the things we have going on in the rural parts of the state. I got a chance to meet with Brooke Leonard, she was here earlier, from the Arkansas Valley Resource Center. They have a really wide range of services they, that they offer. I would, you know, have folks reach out to them, if you think you may need that service, or if you know someone that may need that, that sort of service. Don't hesitate to reach out, her or staff are, are great folks. Me and Martin went down there, it's been about a week ago, we went down there and talked about some other stuff, but we got, got a chance to meet everybody, and they were super friendly and super welcoming, and so I just encourage everyone that may need that service to get out there and use that, utilize that service. Paul invited me to the Senior Centers Board meeting, I appreciate that. I had, I had to leave a little early, because I had another meeting I had to run too, but I, but I enjoyed that. That is a really good board y'all have down there, Paul. Lots of good stuff going on down there, and, and they're real, they're real excited about the Rocky, Rockies game. So if y'all wanna go to Rocky's game, they need some more folks to go along with them. So just, again, reach out to Celeste over there, and she'll get y'all hooked up. Veteran Coffee, every Wednesday there at the Senior Center. I would invite every veteran here in the area, or if you wanna come out and hang out with a bunch of veterans and hear some cool stories and meet some cool people, every Wednesday, eight AM, over at the Senior Center. Coffee and donuts, come on out and join us, it'd be great. On the fire side here, I got a report from Chief Davidson today, they received a seventeen thousand, five hundred dollar grant from the Colorado State Division of Fire Prevention and Control for new rope rescue equipment. It's gonna replace some of their old equipment that's been around for about twenty years, is what this, what this note says. They also hosted a hazmat operations class, and nine, nine firefighters from here in La Jolla. It was La Jolla, golly, new guy, right? Lahuna, yep. That's, that's actually the second time I did, that did that this week.
And today's only Monday.
And today's only Monday, hey, just wait, sit back, I'm liable to do it again. Lahuna, I do, I do apologize. And then they had, they had four guys from Rocky Ford come over. And again, this was a thirty-two hour long class, and then we took it in their state test here in about three or four weeks to get, actually get the certification for that. On the electric side of things, we'll give a shout out to Chris and the guys, they went over to Lamar. Had those big winds that come through, what's it been, two weeks back now? Yeah, about two weeks back, had the big winds come down, they had twenty-seven poles, was that how many? Okay, had twenty-seven poles go down in the wind. We sent our, a crew of our guys over there to help out. They ended up putting, helping out with about a mile, you said?
A mile and half transmission line.
About a mile and a half transmission line, which is a crazy amount. Streets are also on the electric side here, don't want to forget anything. We're doing a little bit of repairs of our own here, for, for our, our system here that got damaged by the wind. I'm just ongoing repairs as usual. On the street side of things, lots of, lots of stuff going on on the street side, side of things. We're gonna be doing some asphalt projects beginning in June, over there, over Walmart there, Conley. I don't know how many times I've been hit up about Conley, anybody else get hit up about Conley? Then also, there at Sixth, Sixth Street between Santa Fe and Colorado, and then Second Street between Simron and Smithlin, in front of the New Jail right there, where they're, we'll be finishing up there. Brownfield Grant is about to move into Phase Two for multiple sites. Phase Two includes the asbestos survey part of it. They did some sidewalk repairs down at Brick and Tile, Tenth and Barnes down there. I think they wrapped that all up, I think it's all wrapped up down there now. Get out there and check that out, really neat place. Also applied for a mini grant from the Southeast Colorado Economic Development for five thousand dollars. This is a plethora of money that no one claimed for twenty twenty-four, and we've already been given one mini grant for five thousand last year. They'll be applying for the normal twenty twenty-five mini grant next month-ish, is it up there? Asphalt season is, is among us, is, is among us now. We started here in April, then I guess about mid-April, or yeah, but toward the middle of late April will be another batch coming. Patched a water line cut that was made at Ninth and, in Nevada.
It's right by Brick and Tile Park.
Is it?
Yep.
From, from Dona. From, from Dawn and HR, I guess we are going to be receiving a little over fifty applications for the swimming pool, which is good because we need lots of folks over, over there to do that. Also receive the, an ozone season transport grant for fifty-three hundred dollars to provide free fares for transit riders for the months of June, July, and August. So if you know anybody who needs to be shuttled around, it will be taken care of this summer. Dawn also wanted to pass along that her Senate confirmation hearing will be this afternoon, but I actually ended up getting postponed to report her to another term to the Colorado Transit Enterprise Board. Again, like I said, they got pushed back. I think, I think she said the next week, if I remember correctly. I'm probably getting that wrong, but she's not here to correct me, so I'll move right on. Library, they are still, some other books still going on. They, so far between Saturday and Sunday, they, they've done about twelve hundred dollars. At this point, they are doing donations. If you want to go there and find any some books, they're going to take donations for whatever amount you want to give them. The April calendar, April calendar is out for the library. Be sure to check it out. Again, there's always so many things going on, so many different services going on at the library. I mean, there's something for everyone over there, in my opinion. Teen volunteer applications will be available April fourteenth and due by May tenth for any student entering the seventh through the twelfth grade. Again, it's a program they offer over the summer for kids to come out and get some, get some experience in the library. And then the summer reading program starts June second. Information on that, they'll put some more information on, about that in the April, end of April, beginning of May. Then from Aliza, auditors are here for the next two weeks. And let's see, the due changes over financials will be available later this week, is what she says. And that's all I have. Oh, I am a officially a Coloradan now. You got my driver's license, got my tags, got my library card today, so we are switched, officially switched over, and I'm full-on Color, Color, Coloradan, right? Don't you always say Coloradan? I'm full-on Coloradan now. In, 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 in La Hanta.
Hey, we've been asked about Conley Road more times than you've said La Junta tonight. Any questions for Mr. Hart? Moving on to governing body comments.
Just a citizen observation that was about to my attention, the Brick and Tile part of the, I guess the mosaic looks great, but you can't read Brick and Tile. It's hard to read when you're traveling, pass it on the road, so. Just a citizen observation, and if anybody can speak, maybe tomorrow, on utility board, probably the better place to address it. All the glitches with the utility bill's dates being wrong, accounts being wrong, maybe tomorrow, but you'd better plan to address that possibly.
Any other governing body comments?
I just have two quick things. Next Monday is Ward Three Listening Night. We'll still be at Casa del Sol, April fourteenth, six o'clock in the Aspen Center. We'll probably move outdoors starting in May, just in time for the studios to. And in May, we'll start meeting again at Brick and Tile Park. And then just curious, we, we never really had an end of year twenty-twenty-four budget presentation. So I do think it's something that, and I know that we'll have the audit presented. I'm assuming it's through this week. We're still a few weeks off, at least from that. Yeah. Yeah, and then it'll take a couple of weeks to pull it together. But I, I do think it's important that we have a, a public presentation on how the twenty-twenty-four budget ended up.
I agree.
Couple of things. First, I saw it out there on Seaco News, but just in case anybody doesn't know. April fifteenth, two PM, they're doing the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new Otero County Detention Center. So anybody interested in that, that's out there. And then the other thing I'm excited about, because I'm a bowler, but hello, Otero County. Strike and Play will be arriving in La Hana soon. Please follow our Facebook for updates and help us make this place come back to life. Strike and Play was founded by four La Hana native couples. The establishment of Strike and Play is coming at a crucial time for the Otero County community fulfilling significant void in local entertainment options. When the previous bowling alley in town closed its doors, the eight individuals recognized the importance of keeping the beloved pastime alive in their community. The founders, Deep Roots in La Hana, and their understanding of the area needs drove their decision to create Strike and Play. As lifelong residents, they witnessed firsthand the impact of losing the town's only bowling alley. By opening Strike and Play, they aimed not only to provide a much-needed recreational facility, but also to create a hub for, for social interaction and community building. The bowling alley will offer a range of services catering to various segments of the community, including lead bowlers, family-friendly activities, and special events. As the business continues to evolve, the founders are committed to enhancing the customer's experience. Renovations and upgrades are underway and will be continuous, demonstrating Strike and Play's dedication to providing top-notch entertainment for La Hana and the surrounding Otero County area. So exciting we'll have the bowling alley back up and, and updates and a more appealing facade and a more filling, appealing center for, for the public, so. Just wanted to make that announcement.
I, I don't see Strike and Play, we can't find it yet, so share it when.
I will, yeah.
Yeah, that's very exciting. I don't bowl, but I still think it's super exciting and important for this community. I'm glad you heard that.
Thank you. I just have Quilts of Valor, me, Michael, Todd, and Brad were invited. Michael unfortunately had Action Colorado at that time. But Quilts of Valor, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans went off. Their event was really, really amazing. It was covered by Seaco News there, so if you guys want to go and watch it, it's a really cool thing that they do. So thank you to Sangra Cristo and our American Legion Post for, for putting on that event. That was awesome. Then I want to give a special shout out to the library for doing their book sale, their annual book sale. And I do have some bad news. My family did complete the community puzzle today. So if you guys are going into the library to try and get that done, we, we completed it this afternoon. I got a little ten-year-old that is a puzzle maniac, so she was happy to get that, that one completed. Also want to give a shout out to Martin Montoya. Martin was in contact with me, and he said, you know, we always tell people to come in and do potholes or call in with pothole information. He says, I think I'm going to make a form that they could fill out. And I told him, I said, that's a great idea. I said, but a better idea would be if you can put that form online. So with the help of Christian, Martin and Christian worked together to put a pothole form online so where you can report those from your phone. So if you don't have the time to come into the city building or you're not going to give a call and get routed to the right department, you can just go online onto the City Lona website. It's live right now. There's a pothole form that you guys can fill out. That doesn't mean it's going to get fixed instantly, so I want that to be clear. Adrian, are you watching? It's not meaning it's going to get fixed immediately, okay? But that is a way to streamline it and to help our engineering, our pothole crew out because asphalt season is coming and they need to know about it. Just because you see it every day on your route doesn't mean that everybody sees it, so utilize that. The other thing that we started talking about was street signs. Everyone's like, oh, you put a stop sign over here, but you didn't put a stop sign over here. We need a slow children at play sign. So there's a form for if you need a street sign, you can fill that out as well too. That doesn't mean you're going to get a street sign. They will, you know, get back with you if they can or if they can't or if they need to do a traffic study, but that's online too. So we were talking about these two forms, and then I got an idea. And I called Chief Quick up, and I said, you know, would it help, since we only have one code officer, okay, if we were able as the public to report code violations on a form, online? So Christian was able to make a form for code enforcement violations that include a place to upload a picture as well too. So that is now available on your website. That went live today. So there is one more that I want to look at, but that's going to be a conversation with Michael because I don't know where it's going to fall at, and it's dead trees and tree branches that are overhanging roads. Because if you look at Charter and you look at the code, it says reported to the city manager. I don't know if you want to get all those reports or not. So, so wherever we decide where we want to do that, that form, that, that form will be able to go up there too so people could report those as well too. It's a way for our community to help us out, and it's a way for us to do more with less. So we're grateful for the technology of the new website. We used to have a really good website for nineteen ninety-five, and now we're, we're coming into the new century and we're utilizing it well too. So thank you to Martin, thank you to Chief Quick, thank you to Christian for all their help in getting us all those forms available to, to the community to, to make a difference. Last but not least, Otero CDS Community Baby Shower was today, and it really, really was a great turnout. And there was a lot of expectant mothers there today. And it was really, you know, each one I asked, where are you guys going to go? Where are you guys going to go? I heard a couple of Springs, a couple of Pueblo. Prowers County was there promoting their, their medical center because if we, when we lose our OB later on, is it this, later this month or is it already, April thirtieth? That, that is going to be a huge hit to this, to this valley. So, you know, I do know that Andy has a media interview with K R D O thirteen. Hopefully that could shed some more light on it, but that, that is something that, you know, we still hope that there's something that can be done on that, so. Other than that, oh, trash routes also. I get asked about trash routes. That's on the website with the GIS system, so you, you can't look for it under sanitation, it's under the GIS system, so. And also, I think the Tiff District's under the GIS system as well too. So there's a lot of cool stuff on that website if you guys just start messing with it, and it's still getting updated. So if you have something you want added or you just have something that you think it's lacking, just get with Mel. You don't have to come to council and say, hey, you're missing X, Y, and Z. Just get with Mel, contact Mel. We can, if we can, we'll, we'll add it to that website.
I love the idea of highlighting something on the website at every council meeting. And I already filled out my pothole form. So yeah, I think pointing out a new feature or ways that we've updated it and improved it would be a great thing for us to do.
So find, find your update for next meeting and make sure we, we highlight that. Other than that, thank you for coming out tonight. I'll adjourn us from this meeting.